convene, Ms. Panikos, seconded by Dr. Murphy. Thank you. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Okay, thank you. I'm Dr. Schoen. Do you have a report for us this evening?
I do, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Yes, good to go. I wanted to take an opportunity this evening to address concerns to a scheduled change that has drawn a dramatic response. Allow me to clarify some of the misconceptions and misinterpretations that have come out in social media, on local television stations, and in print about our change in the frequency of book checkout for our K-5 students. The most disturbing part of the news coverage recently is information related to our adjustment in book checkout time was related to saving money. This statement could not be farther from the truth. It is so disappointing and disturbing that the reason for this change shared by parents to the media was attributed to money when never once was this ever part of our decision-making. There was a press release and notification posted last week and most recently by a parent inviting many of you to our meeting tonight. We're glad you're here so that you can hear the information directly from me. I'd like to start by providing historical perspective with regard to the adjustment of book checkout schedule for our students in K-5 schools. During the 1718 school year, the district established a technology committee. Committee members included K-12 teacher representatives and administrative representatives, central office staff, in addition to all staff members as part of our K-12 library and media department. The objective for these meetings was to discuss the infrastructure, the supports we have in place for our schools, and technology instruction. We knew we were preparing for one-to-one environments at the middle school and high school level at that time and anticipated the construction of a new steam addition at the high school. We also discussed the importance of exposing technology standards and technology expectations to our students gradually and thoughtfully. Standard 8.1 educational technology standards were established by the New Jersey Department of Education. They've been in existence since 2004 and revised in 2014 and cover technology skills expectations for our pre-K-12 level. It must be noted that we have always been in compliance with standard 8.1. Over the years, our teachers have been infusing many of these standards as part of their classroom instruction. In order to improve and increase upon these practices, we asked ourselves if these standards were being delivered in the most thorough fashion so that each student had the introduction, exposure, and understanding with the same exact proficiency as all of our students. Updating and enhancing the role of the library and media specialists at the elementary school level allows our students to experience a wide variety of literacy and learning experiences. While there is an opportunity for book circulation, our students' experiences are enriched by developmentally appropriate activities that promote collaboration, problem-solving, analysis, expansive thinking, and metacognition. All skills needed to be active, enthusiastic young readers, inclusive of the use of technology. The committee was challenged with the question, how do we support and ensure that our 1,000 K-5 students get the same experience, exposure, and baseline technology proficiency? Over several committee meetings last year, we focused on ways to better align the 8.1 technology New Jersey student learning standards with our district curriculum. Improved alignment would further promote technology. It would define professional development and benchmark skills at each grade level and highlight hardware-software needed to execute these standards. Our library and media department has been discussing the Common Sense Education Digital Citizenship Curriculum since the 1718 school year. Engaged in this process and in preparation for use of these supplemental resources, the library and media specialists at Lenape Meadows and Ramapo Ridge, along with our supervisor of technology integration, attended a digital citizenship symposium in May of 2018. The K-5 library and media specialists are committed to integrating the digital citizenship curriculum into our working curriculum this year. Students today are using the immense power of digital media to explore, connect, create, and learn in ways that have never been imagined. With this power, young people have extraordinary opportunities, and yet they face potential pitfalls too. Schools are dealing with associated ramifications like cyberbullying, digital cheating, and internet safe use and security. These issues underscore the need for students to learn and for teachers to teach digital literacy and citizenship skills. Common Sense Education Digital Citizenship Curriculum empowers our students to think critically, behave safely, and participate responsibly in our digital world. This resource is comprehensive, yet it is a balanced approach in addressing safety and security concerns, including ethics and behavioral issues, as well as digital literacy skills. This resource is aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the American Association of School Librarians Standards. In November of 2017, American Association of School Librarians released their updated standard framework for learners. The AASL standard framework reflects a comprehensive approach to teaching and learning by demonstrating the connection between learner, librarian, and library standards. Our library and media department will continue to examine these updated AASL standards this year and will be working in the library and media curriculum to ensure that the new standards are thoughtfully reflected in our curriculum. This initiative will be heavily aligned to the National Future Ready Librarians Framework. Additional meetings were held last year to discuss grade-level technology bans and to further discuss what practices are currently in place, as well as to delineate who could own these technology standards. Again, we have been incorporating these standards, but we wanted to do so in a unified way throughout our elementary program. We discussed that this is a shared responsibility of all of our teachers to create opportunities allowing students to apply technology standards within content areas, but we wanted to identify a primary area or class to introduce and expose these early technologies in the digital citizenship curriculum so that students would all receive the same introduction and be able to apply those skills within classroom instruction. We determined that the library and media teacher is the most appropriate professional in our school building to introduce and expose these technology standards so that children receive quality instruction with one message, one consistent approach, on a regular basis. And after the students were exposed to the standard, the classroom teachers would be able to use their student skill sets and apply them through content areas throughout curriculum instruction. At the same time that the district technology committee was meeting last year, our K-5 principals were meeting as well. The K-5 principals met in January, April, and June of last year. They meant to discuss the inclusion of the technology standards within classroom instruction and the importance of providing more focused instruction as it applied to the 8.1 standards. During these meetings, topics ranged from library book circulation at elementary, middle, and high school levels, the increased responsibility of the media specialists as it pertains to these new expectations, the possibility of alternate schedules for circulation outside of library time, and hiring criteria for two open library and media positions. In order to provide this technology instruction in a similar way by our K-5 library and media specialist, we needed to give our media specialist time to do this. One thing that was recommended, achieved, and supported by the Board of Education was that we needed to increase one of our part-time library and media specialist positions to a full-time role. Based upon the numerous committee meetings and our principal input, the administrators made a recommendation that the circulation schedule at the K-3 schools be revised from once per week every two weeks, and at the 4 or 5 level be revised from once every two weeks to once every three weeks. In this fashion, the library and media specialists would have additional time to dedicate to the instruction of these skills. These book circulation practices exist throughout Bergen County. Of our 76 neighboring districts, half of the 31 respondents have alternating circulation practices as well, with clarification that such practices are designed to allow more time for other enriching experiences that go beyond book circulation. By revising the schedule to allow for direct instruction in all of these essential skills, we are in fact growing the value of our library and media specialists for the overall educational program. In no way was this change in the book checkout schedule intended to unilaterally eradicate the library and media program or specialist position or intend to deprive our students of books or reading time, nor does it mean that this district devalues reading. A parent at our last meeting brought up circulation numbers at our elementary schools in JK, indicating that these numbers had gone down dramatically from this time last year. Since the last board meeting, we wanted to verify those numbers and have reviewed the circulation numbers along with the current circulation rates for each of the elementary schools and JK. Based on the adjustment in schedule, we accept that circulation numbers may go down. As we've reported in previous meetings, we have increased the number of books our elementary school students are able to take out from their library at any one visit. A news article reported that a parent shared that Lenape Meadows circulation numbers are down 1,500 books from September to the end of October 2018 in comparison to the same time last year. The actual circulation from September to October 2018 was in fact only down 500 books. This comparison is invalid solely based on the fact that Lenape Meadows population has decreased by 48 students since last year, which answers for the decrease in this building. In fact, this faulty reporting yielded 1,000 book discrepancy from actual checkout numbers. I feel it's important to provide clarification on statements that have been made at previous board meetings as it pertains to our classroom libraries. Across our K-5 schools, each classroom contains libraries with hundreds of books spanning genres and reading levels. At a minimum, students book shop in their classroom at least one time per week while they'll pick up books to keep in their book set. Furthermore, students can shop at any time if in fact they complete the reading of those books in their book sets. The district is committed to assessing the classroom libraries in order to ensure they continue to contain well-rounded, age-appropriate, high-interest books consistent with our literacy program. The K-5 reading philosophy, the Columbia Teachers College Reading Workshop approach encourages our students to choose just-read books of their interest at their own reading level. Our reading program, our students' experience in the library, as well as our students' work in other content areas we offer, further fosters students' love of reading. The love of reading does not happen in isolation. Our media specialists, as well as teachers throughout the school, take part in growing and inspiring our young readers. We reshaped our library and media schedule, adjusting allocation of instructional time devoted to book circulation to include a creative approach to expose our students to a range of information and instructional experiences. Let us emphasize, students' access to books has not been dramatically limited. Students still have access to books. As with all district decision-making, review, and evaluation of this schedule change will take place continuously throughout the year. Our first benchmark evaluation will take place in January of 2019 and will include our library and media specialists as well as our K-5 principals. My explanation this evening is clarification for the process and rationale used to adjust the library and media experience for our students. Thank you very much, Dr. Schoen.
President Barron, can I make a quick statement as well on behalf of the Curriculum Committee?
Yes.
Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello? Can everyone hear me? It's good?
Hello?
Closer to you. Closer to me. All right, let's go to practice. As chairperson of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, I would also like to make a brief statement on behalf of my fellow committee members. First, I would like to thank the parents, educators, and members of various library organizations for bringing their concerns to the board and allowing us the opportunity to delve further into this decision so that we could provide necessary answers to your questions. We appreciate your zeal and enthusiasm for the importance of reading and literacy in our schools, and please know that we also value our district's commitment toward these ideals. I would like to thank Dr. Schoen for her thorough and detailed explanation of the decision to augment circulation schedules in school libraries in grades K through 5. As she noted, we believe that the administration's approach to this decision was systemic and only taken after consultation with multiple resources, including principals, teachers, and library media specialists. This decision was in no way made in a knee-jerk manner, as has been portrayed by members of the public. Often, the administration is tasked with making decisions in the day-to-day running of our schools, and board members are not expected to be part of this type of decision-making. As a board, we carefully select and hire who we trust and believe, and we leave it in their capable hands to make a judgment and make the best decisions on behalf of our school district. We did meet as a committee last week, and both Dr. Schoen and Dr. Dettoro provided comprehensive answers to many of our questions. They were transparent with the details of their decision-making timeline and the process by which this decision was taken. They addressed many of the concerns that committee members had and, when asked, sought additional information to provide further evidence for their decision. Clearly, the 8.1 standards are not new, and they have been around since 2014. Rather than just infuse the 8.1 technology standards throughout classroom instruction as had been done previously, a decision was made to approach these standards in a systematic and consistent approach with a focused delivery utilizing the library and media specialist as providing the foundation for these skills. This was also an opportunity for our library and media specialists to expand upon their growing role and hold more value within the purview of their libraries since their instructional time to students would be increased and more varied. This was not a decision to value one thing, such as circulation of books and reading, over another, such as technology and digital citizenship, but rather a thoughtful attempt to deliver two important aspects of our curriculum with greater parity. We have been ensured that this decision will be reviewed and reevaluated early next year with direct feedback from current library and media specialists in our district regarding this implementation, successes and failures of this current change, and overall impact on students and their use of the library. We know that careful consideration is given to all factors related to this issue, including the relatively small drop in circulation numbers, so that a well-informed decision can be taken as to how to proceed. We have also presented to Dr. Schoen a few suggestions and ideas that we have that will be taken into consideration. We feel confident that our ideas are being taken seriously and will be taken in during the reevaluation of this issue. We will be kept abreast of any developments related to this issue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Anything else? As far as supervisor board decisions?
I sure do, yes. A couple of things before, I'm sorry, a couple of things before I... Sisal? You guys hear that? A couple of things before, actually, one thing of importance before we turn this over to our construction manager, and I'll introduce him as well. However, there is a resolution... You know what? Let me do it second. Let me do it second. Greg, I'd like to introduce Greg Romero. Greg Romero is the construction manager. He works for Cambridge Management. We hired Cambridge Management Company to oversee our steam addition, which is well on its way to fruition, and we've invited Mr. Romero here this evening to kind of go through victorially how, where we've come from and how we're progressing. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Mr. Romero.
Thank you.
Who's going to click? You got it? Call your friends. You know what? You know what? If you want, Greg, Dennis can click for you. It's up to you.
Why don't you look?
All right. Look away. If you can build a building, you can click.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Romero Jr. with Cambridge Construction Management. I'm your on-site...
He needs a mic.
Oh.
You want to use the mic? I'm just taking it up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Romero Jr. with Cambridge Construction Management. I'm your onsite construction project manager for Mawa's new steam addition project. This 8,500-square-foot addition to Mawa's high school complex will be home to several exciting areas of study, including science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Everyone involved in the construction of this exciting project has been working tirelessly to ensure Mawa receives this new building safely, on time, and within budget. I'm happy to be with you here tonight to share our progress to date along with a brief history of how we got to this point. Over the next few minutes, I'm going to run through several real-world construction photos of my time onsite. I like to take a lot of action shots of the workers with the machinery they use to complete their jobs. By sharing these photos, this is the closest I can get you to the steam's construction without you physically being by my side. So let's jump into the slideshow and return to the start of the project. The empty space between Building 7 and the cafeteria.
Use the mic.
Another...
I told you!
Okay. This right here is the, this right here is the cafeteria loading area before the new curbs and paving. Next slide. The first activity onsite was to remove trees. There's a crane being, being used to cut down one of the trees. Next slide. The next major activity was removing the service road and all of the existing curbing that led into the site. Here's an action shot of the asphalt milling machine in progress removing the old service Inside, moving, moving inside Building 7, this is a photo of the underground plumbing necessary for the new bathrooms. In July, we completed the underground stormwater drainage system. This photo gives an excellent perspective of how large this detention system is. That's one worker right there inside of it. Next slide. This is excavation for the second detention system. A tremendous amount of soil needed to be removed from this job site. Over 100 truckloads of clean, tested soil are being removed from the site. This is just one of the trucks removing the soil. This is continued progress in the stormwater drainage system. These concrete boxes here are catch basins. They are going to be the grates in the new parking area in front of the steam complex. In August, we began the curbing. Here's an action shot of the workers forming the curbs, pouring the concrete at the new loading area to the cafeteria. Finished curbing. This project also required coordination onsite with Orange and Rockland. These guys were a pleasure to deal with. Orange and Rockland was able to complete their work, their high-voltage work, in one day to avoid power outage to the high school. They did an excellent job, and I would have no hesitations about working with them again. In mid-August, foundation work began. Here we see some workers building the block. Here's a photo of the footings for the front entrance of the steam complex. Front entrance concrete footings. Workers are showing, I'm showing workers here smoothing out the concrete, getting ready for that blockwork. In order to get the steam addition the strongest foundation possible, we literally fill up the block with concrete. Here is a photo of the truck and the workers filling up the concrete. Here's a close-up of the, of the concrete going into the blockwork, and also to ensure the strongest foundation possible, we have an independent testing agency onsite that I oversee, and they test not only the concrete, but the steel, the soil, and the masonry. In late August, we began backfilling around the foundations. Here's some waterproofing. At the end of August, we began the cafeteria loading area. Here's the asphalt being delivered for that top coat. Mid-September was an eventful, an eventful month. We gained momentum on the exterior block walls. Here you see scaffolding for the exterior block walls at half height. This is an interesting photo here. One of the Mawa students was nice enough to take a drone photo, and here is a great overhead shot showing all of the underground plumbing throughout the building. It's also going to be a great use for us in our asphalt drawings. Another action photo of the masons progressing on the exterior walls. At the end of September, a small milestone for the workers was the delivery of stone. It's not really a big construction milestone, but it's important for the workers because they don't have to work in the mud anymore. So that was a big victory right there. In early October, this was when we were doing our underground electrical and data work. There will be no ugly wire mold in the project. All electric will be neatly hidden and recessed, so we won't see any wire mold in the project. This is a completed photo of loading area. Before concrete is poured on this, before concrete is poured to the slab, vapor barrier and steel mesh are applied. Here's a photo of that. October 25th was a very big day for us. We poured our concrete slab. We had 10 trucks of concrete arrive, and that's approximately 100 yards of concrete. It was a big day for us. About 15 men pulled concrete with the pump truck there. Overhead, that long piece of metal right there is actually the concrete being pumped into the job site. It makes life a hell of a, a lot easier for us. Another action photo of the tennis construction truck.
He's right, too.
Yeah. I like action photos. Here's a close-up of the concrete being applied. And here we are today, finished concrete slab. Another angle. Here are some interior walls, and in the background you can see the large steel lintel for the back area. Here we started interior walls. And this is a photo of the unique Thunderbird Think Tank, one of the highlights of the project. I'm looking forward to seeing this feature come to life. It's going to have very nice blue translucent panels around the exterior, making a very unique space. Moving forward, key milestones are continued steel deliveries, masonry, and roofing. We are currently approximately three weeks ahead of schedule, and I plan to keep pushing to achieve our completion date at the end of May 2019.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. One more item this evening. I was going to do it beforehand, but I'm going to do it afterwards. You've all just had the opportunity to, to meet Mr. Greg Romero. He has been with us since, I'd say, May or June of last year when we brought on Cambridge Management. And we have worked, the board certainly has, we certainly have, the central office administrators, and Mr. Vandermark certainly has as well. Scott Vandermark has been in our district for over 25 years, and he is, is far more than a fixture around here. We believe he bleeds Mawa blue. Scott will be sorely missed, but he is moving on to a wonderful time in his life as he's retiring, and the board has accepted that. And that retirement is effective as of February 1st. So it was important that we found somebody to, to not fill his shoes, because that would be impossible, but to find somebody who would do right by our district and, and had enough information and background to make us even better. We put an ad in the paper...
Okay, one more item this evening. I was going to do it beforehand, but I'm going to do it afterwards. You've all just had the opportunity to meet Mr. Greg Romero. He has been with us since, I'd say, May or June of last year, when we brought on Cambridge Management. And we have worked, the board certainly has. We certainly have, the central office administrators, and Mr. Vandermark certainly has as well. Scott Vandermark has been in our district for over twenty-five years, and he is far more than a fixture around here. We believe he bleeds Mawa blue. Scott will be sorely missed, but he is moving on to a wonderful time in his life as he's retiring, and the board has accepted that. And that retirement is effective as of February first. So it was important that we found somebody to not fill his shoes, because that would be impossible, but to find somebody who would do right by our district and had enough information and background to make us even better. We put an ad in the paper. We received a little under forty applicants for that. We interviewed, how many? Six, eight?
Fourteen.
Oh, interviewed fourteen people on one day as a little meet and greet, and then we got it down to four candidates. I am pleased to let you know and to recommend to the board this evening Resolution sixteen B. Resolution sixteen B is the recommendation for the board to consider the hiring of Mr. Greg Romero as our new supervisor of building and grounds to replace Mr. Vandermark, who again will be retiring on February first. In this capacity, Mr. Romero, being a construction manager at this point and has been for some time, has honed the skills necessary to manage multiple tradesmen at one time as they worked on several aspects of a project. He often would manage multiple smaller projects at once while working toward the culmination of a larger goal. Through the interview process, Mr. Romero shared the ability to communicate effectively and efficiently with all levels of staff, from contractors to owner representatives to upper management. We're confident he will bring an enthusiasm and a work ethic that will contribute to the success at this position. We look forward to Mr. Romero reviewing the various aspects of his position from a new perspective and perhaps seeing where efficiency or streamlining of operations and procedures might occur, while also bringing innovative systems to implement those changes when necessary. Mr. Romero will serve in the capacity of a consultant from January tenth to January thirty-first, working side by side with Mr. Vandermark. And with the board's approval this evening, he will serve in the capacity as our new supervisor. So preliminarily, I wanted to introduce him to you so that we could place a name with a face, and having him do his presentation tonight certainly allowed us to do so. That is it this evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Leaker, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, we're good this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barr, do you report for us this evening?
No, I'm just excited for our next meeting, where we will be doing our staff highlights on December twelfth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to that. My report this evening. I attended the trustee meeting of the Mawa Schools Foundation on Monday evening, and I want to thank them for all that they do for our schools and all of the grants that they went through and they approved. Fantastic amount of things that they're doing in our school district. So very, very thankful for them for that. And I'm also going to let everyone know that they are looking for volunteers for the Thunderbird Run, which will be held on May nineteenth of two thousand nineteen. So they're looking for people to actually run the event and to volunteer to help with the event. So if you're interested, please go to their website and let them know. I'm sure they'd be very thankful for that. That's all that I have for this evening. Do you have any board committee reports?
Briefly for policy on fifteen D. We'll see first reading of policies thirty-two eighty-two and forty-two eighty-two. These are our policies on use of social media, networking sites for our teaching staff and support staff. These were adopted not too long ago, but we reviewed these two at the request of the MEA, and we have made some changes based on their feedback.
Thank you very much. Any others? Mr. Gallo?
Reporting for the negotiations committee, we will shortly begin our engagement with the MEA on the next contract. Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. Have any other committee reports this evening? Thank you very much. Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments, and any reports for non-agenda items? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
I had the privilege of attending a parent academy on Monday night at the high school. Math is not a spectator sport. Math is not a spectator sport. And Danielle Paulway and her staff from the math department put on a fabulous presentation on how our students are learning math in a totally different way than I learned how math was. And it's very, very exciting. My brain was sweating at the end of the process. But it's programs like this that really are the hallmark of the parent academy concept. And Mike Di Torro is expanding it greatly this year, and I really look forward to future presentations. And Danielle's all fired up to do another one, I think, in the spring, so.
Mike, if you didn't know that, you do now.
He was there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. May I take, have a motion to move old business? Ms. Seco, second by Ms. Conoco. Do you play the fake roll call, please?
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Seco?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett?
Estine. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like a motion to proceed with fifteen A through P. I have a motion. Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthee. Do you have any questions, concerns, suggestions, and any of these topics? I would just like to thank the anonymous donor for a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation to the Mawa High School Music Program. Thank you very much, whoever you are. Okay, would you take roll call, please?
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes, but I abstain from check number zero-nine-two-nine-six-six on fifteen A.
Thank you. Ms. Seco?
Yes, and I abstain from check number zero-nine-three-zero-zero-eight.
Thank you. Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on fifteen A, I abstain from check number zero-nine-two-eight-five-eight. And actually, I would just like to highlight the fifteen H, which is a steam addition modification. So if you look in that picture, the covered walkway that goes in front of the building, this modification increases the covered walkway all the way to the main school building there, so just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes, except on fifteen A, I abstain from check number zero-nine-two-nine-five-six.
Thank you. And Ms. Barrett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, I would like a motion to move new business, sixteen A through Q. I have a motion to proceed. Dr. Morthee, second by Mr. Gallo. Any comments on any of these items from the board members? All good to go? All right, would you please take roll call?
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Seco?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett?
Yes. Public questions or comments? Now, this section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes.
My name is Blake Parks, and I live at six-to-nine Drive, Mawa, New Jersey. I am seven-years-old, and I am, and I, wait. And in second grade. I don't like that we can only check out books every other week. It makes me sad and slightly mad because I love to read. You can read all of your books and have to wait twelve whole days to get new books, and this is really boring. I love the series My Weird School. It is about avoiding aging with all these problems. I finished one in a day or two. I have to wait a long time for new books. My favorite is Mr. Granite from another planet. I don't like computer days in the library because it is crazy. Everyone is yelling, "I finished the level!" And it gets out of hand, and everyone is fired up. Some students are learning, but many are screaming and not learning. On reading day, everyone is calm. We are all reading and learning. Can you please let us check out books every week? I hope that you do the right thing. Thank you for listening.
Hi, good evening. Miri Upton, fifteen Whispering Pines Drive. My daughter, who has a little bit of stage fright, wanted to write a letter. My name is Isla. I'm in Mrs. Kaiser's class. I don't like, you ready to read?
Yeah.
So, my name is Isla. Isla, I'm in Mrs. Kaiser's class. I don't like that I have to borrow books one time every two weeks. I think it's not fair. I also want to borrow books every week. P.S., I like to read books.
Thank you very much.
On a note that I think needs to be addressed to Dr. Shawn and the board in regards to the news to channel report.
Yes.
Not one time was it mentioned that it was budgetary issues by any of the parents, so I'd like you to know that it did not come from us, and when we all saw it, we were all disappointed because we understand that that's not what it is.
I really, really appreciate you saying that, because I did the, as soon as, because now one of our reports made reference to money. This was not at all about money, so thank you.
Right. We all did also. The only question that I have for you guys now as a board is, obviously, Mawa's been in the press for really negative things over the last couple of years, and this is really, it's sad as a community, because I think we're, you know, it's a great community. I appreciate the time that you have put in for your report, but I think this probably could have been done a couple of meetings ago as opposed to waiting and letting it get this far. So just as a citizen.
While I appreciate what you're saying, I don't think that any of your comments have been, have fallen on deaf ears. Dr. Di Torro did a couple of presentations addressing some of the questions. You know, I did, I said the same things he did. It just took me about sixteen pages to do it, so he's a little bit more eloquent than I am. But it was addressed, so please don't think that, you know, we just heard you and we didn't. He did stand up and do a well-articulated statement. But thank you for saying so.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You can do it.
We're all rooting for you.
I'm a board of education. My name is Amanda Wang, and my address is one ninety-five Shrewsbury Court. I'm in third, I'm a third grader in Willapae Meadows, and my teacher is Miss Clark. One of my favorite subjects is library. I really liked the schedule last year when we got to borrow five books per week, but this year, the book amount we can borrow is too small for me. I can easily finish three books within one day, and then I have to wait two more weeks before I can get to borrow three new books. I miss the chance to borrow the new books. In conclusion, I hope we are able to get back the old schedule from last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi there. So my name is Trista Davinero. I live at ten eighty Ash Drive. So my name is Trista. I'm of Willapae Meadows' mom. I grew up in here in Mawa and graduated with a class of two thousand and five. I happily came back here with my own children in tow, despite the sacrifices made just to be able to afford to live in Mawa again, to give them the same chance to have the same education that I did, an education that set me up for success in my adult life. I have two children. My son is five and currently enrolled in Holy Cross with the expectation to start kindergarten at Willapae Meadows next year. However, I'd like to take a moment to talk to you about my daughter. Katherine Anne is six and in first grade at Willapae Meadows. She is exceptionally bright. I know that I'm biased and that all parents will say this about their children, but I recently sat in a parent-teacher conference and had her teacher tell me that my daughter will one day change the world. I'm a little bit nervous, so. Anyone who knows my daughter will tell you that she spends most of her time with her head buried in a book. She currently reads on a second-grade level. For reference, she just graduated to Level L, which is huge. We're almost at third-grade level already. Her teachers in both kindergarten and first grade have tried to slow her down, make sure that her reading comprehension is on the same level, and that she's not just reading the words on the page. Needless to say, she has exceeded expectations. Both of my children have access to Kindles, iPads, a computer that is set up for just them to use. My six-year-old set up my new iPhone X for me faster than I could have gotten it even out of the box. And while my son is more interested in his Kindle, Katherine Anne will happily crawl up with whatever book she's currently working through. I would like to think she gets her love of reading from me. I started reading to them as babies and have always encouraged family and friends to buy them books as gifts. They both have bookshelves in their bedrooms that are buckling under the weight of all the worlds that they can get lost in. I spent a good portion of my life instead of a library or bookstore, to the point that when I brought them to the Mawa Library to get their first library card last year, the three librarians behind their front desk immediately recognized me, knew me by name, despite the fact that I hadn't been there more than ten years. I'm hoping that this peek into my life will shed some light as to why I'm here speaking to you today. When we first heard about the changes in the frequency of checking out books, it flagged my attention. I can't say that I was thrilled at the prospect of less books, but with most things in life, I was planning to just roll with it. It wasn't until my daughter came home in frustrated tears one day that I had decided to speak up. She was upset because she had read through all three books she had brought home already. It was only a few days after she had checked them out. She was frustrated because she wanted to read something else, and we didn't have time in our busy schedule to make it to the public library that week. This is the girl who, at four, went to her teacher in her Montessori classroom and announced that she was now going to learn how to read, and by the following month, she was doing just that. She decided in kindergarten to read every Kim Jensen book that was available, and did. She read every Francine Nancey book, every Amelia Bedelia, and now she's working her way through Romano Pimby, at least the ones that I can find that are age-appropriate for her. Now here she is in a beautiful state-of-the-art school with an incredible library inside, crying to me because she doesn't have enough access to books. We, as parents and educators, should be enforcing a love of books, to learn ourselves in other countries' cultures and other worlds that exist solely in imaginations. The big thing about having a kid who reads well above her grade level is this: books that she would want to read aren't always available inside of her classroom. We really looked out this year with Mrs. Bauer, who has gone above and beyond to provide reading materials for all of the students in her class, regardless of what level they read on. It just seems like an odd workload to put on the sorrows of a teacher already spread too thin, when you have a library within the school for just that exact purpose. My fear as a parent is that my daughter will shy away from her love of reading when she realizes that the books inside her classroom are not on the level that she's reading on now. I don't want to take away from the importance of everything else that the school offers. I fully see the need in teaching kids to have used computers, the importance in technology-based learning. I was thrilled to hear about the addition of the steam lab, and I truly look forward to every time she comes home to tell me about the creative ways that they're now using it. I just feel like that while all these areas are important, they should be considered in, in addition to, and not in, instead of. I don't want to raise my children in a world of physical books, take a backseat to a computer screen. I want them to see the necessity of both. I also understand that reading that many books a week is not for every child. Some classes already require reading logs as nightly homework with books provided in class, and this may become overwhelming. I saw a comment that a friend of mine had made on Facebook, and he said that it should be at the discretion of the child and their parents, whether they're checking books out every week. While it may not work for some, it worked for mine, and her choice was taken away from her. I'm sure there will be weeks when my own kid doesn't want to check out books, and that's fine by me. However, I want it to be because she doesn't want to, and not because someone else is giving her the impression that it's not important. I hope that my message today is taken with nothing but the respectful tone that it was written in. I also hope that you can feel my sense of urgency. Hopefully, my words can be added to those of parents who vocally stood up over the last few weeks to fight on behalf of libraries and librarians throughout the school district. At the end of the day, none of us want to take anything away. All we want to do is share our love of books with generations to come. I want my children and all of their peers to come home feeling like they're receiving a well-rounded education that's inclusive of every student in every classroom, that is meeting all of their needs. Respectfully of yours, Trista Davinero, class of two thousand and five, more importantly, Katherine Mason's mom.
Thank you very much.
Jen Park, six-to-nine Drive. I wanted to reiterate what Miri Upton stated about misinformation that the media took. We never said anything about it being a monetary issue. We've only provided facts. We haven't spun anything at all. In addition, we've spoken very highly of the education our students have, our children, and the students have received. We think the board of ed, you know, we have great respect for the board of ed. We have great respect for the administration, the teachers. I mean, my son, for him to come up here and speak, speaks so highly of this district. I do have a couple of questions in regards to ways in which this is going to be evaluated. I don't know who to pose those questions to. I figured I would start with you. So what exactly is going to be evaluated in January, and how will it be evaluated?
Thanks, I can do that. Hi, Ms. Park, how are you? Thank you for clarifying the comments that were made on the news. Unfortunately, we know it, but the world doesn't know it, and sometimes what they see, they take as our reality, so I appreciate that a great deal. We're going to meet with our library media specialists in January, as well as our KFAB principals. And although I would love to be able to give you an elaborate assessment process, it really needs to be a thoughtful dialogue, because what's going on in the classrooms and the ability for our library media specialists to infuse those additional digital media pieces, their input's going to mean a great deal to us, and the principals who oversee their buildings are going to mean a great deal to us. Please know that we want our children to read, and reading is... So, we're looking at six weeks in a program where students have the opportunity to go three times, right? If we're doing K to three every other. We want to give it some time to thoughtfully roll out, and we've spoken to the board and we've said, hey, listen, allow the remainder of this year, really, the remainder of this year to complete 2018 for another five or six weeks to let it roll out. And then, we're going to meet in the beginning of January, and we're going to sit with our library media specialists and say, okay, what were you able to cover and what weren't? Can you do both at the same time? What does it look like? Do you still need that time? We need to take that piece of information from our experts. So, I hope that that adequately answers what we're going to do discussion-wise. I'm not going to do a big PowerPoint presentation with data. I could certainly go through circulation numbers, but the bottom line is, and what most of you are here for this evening, is we want our circulation schedule back every week. We want our kids to be able to put a book out every week, and we understand that, and we just want to confidently and thoughtfully be able to do both. And I want to take that from the expertise of our specialists.
Absolutely. No, thank you for that. I also did want to state that while it seems although there's lemons out there with the so-called negative publicity that we have, you know, that's been in the news lately, I think now is the time for us to make lemonade out of that and be a driving force behind school libraries, you know, evaluating, making, you know, smart decisions, having open discussion and transparency. Thank you for your report. That was very... You know, I learned a great deal, actually. Mawa is an amazing place to be. We have an amazing resources. We moved here specifically for the school system. We believe deeply in it, and we are just... We want to keep advocating for our children, the students, and we are not adversaries. We're absolutely allies in this. So, thank you.
Well, I've got to tell you, sometimes getting media is not all sorts of easy, Mrs. Park, but you guys have connection with channels two, four, 11, and 12, which I spoke to, at Great Link, as well as in the Jersey Department of Ed. So, when I need to get good media out there, I'm going to call upon you and your husband, and you're going to have to come help me out.
When we open the STEAM building?
Exactly. Exactly.
Get them all back.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Zigg. I live at 1075 Pennsylway in Mawa. I do... I am going to piggyback upon everybody else. Thank you for finally clarifying and giving us remarks that were much more transparent than I've seen over the past nine weeks. I do have a question, though. I'm listening... I listened to everything that you said. I heard, you know, standards 8.1. I hear that you are... You know, you respect the professional organizations and you want to embed those standards into the teaching. My question is, you're building the STEM buildings, which is beautiful and amazing. You're saying there's so much technology that we can't possibly have our librarians be librarians. You've essentially turned them into technology teachers. Why don't we have any technology teachers? Why are there no technology teachers in the building?
Technologies?
I'm not talking about classroom teachers, librarians. That is part of our job. But I'm saying, why... If STEM is so important, if this is coming down the pipe, why don't we have technology teachers? Why don't you have an additional person to assist the librarian and to assist students in covering those standards? Money is no object in this district, which is certainly... You know, we can see that from the STEM building. So, I just... I don't understand why we don't have technology teachers.
I didn't want to interrupt you again.
I'm sorry?
I didn't want to interrupt you again. I think that when you're referring to the STEAM building, right? And so, that's science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics.
Right.
Technology is one of those areas that needs to be successfully infused throughout all content areas.
I agree.
It's not just specific. Library is one of those areas that needs to be infused.
I agree.
So, the library and media specialist is not the only person who infuses that technology.
Right. It's also the classroom teacher.
Absolutely.
But isn't the classroom teacher's responsibility to be teaching typing or the librarian's responsibility to be teaching typing? Like, those skills, if we're going to spend so much money on this STEM building, why are we not investing more money in our elementary schools on technology skills with the addition of staff that are specifically trained?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Because the best way to infuse any skill is within the content area itself. So, rather than just doing typing, you have two issues. You have, one, you need to fit it into a schedule, and the schedule is already incredibly tight. So, to add another period of instruction on any level is going to be difficult scheduling, and with doing that, we'll be removing someone... Something else, and somebody else would come to me and absolutely say, why did you remove an art class, or why did you remove a robotics class for the sake of technology? So, technology really needs to be infused across the board, but keep in mind, the additional technology skills that we're asking our media specialists to infuse on a foundational level so that everyone gets the same exposure, that's not new, the technology piece and infusing those as part of the library and media specialist position. They've done that well before we went into the schedule change. And what we have in essence done is given them 15 minutes or so every other week to do that. So, you're looking at four and a half, five hours over the course of a school year. So, we believe that we'll have a better chance of infusing those by adding those additional five hours as opposed to what you're suggesting, which would be difficult scheduling-wise and would potentially be 40 minutes every week over the course of a year.
Okay.
So, we're looking for them to be infused. We're not looking for them to be seen or necessarily taught in isolation.
Oh, they shouldn't be taught in isolation. They should absolutely be taught within those core subject areas. The librarian should be working... You know, along with the classroom teachers to implement technology, to implement those skills for critical thinking. I understand all that, but I also know there's many... Going back to the STEAM building and how this is going to be the crown jewel of Bergen County, I still feel that we should somehow be adding staff to develop technology skills in elementary. There are many successful models out there in Bergen County. Norwood. Norwood is incredible. They have two librarians in their school along with the technology teacher, and they do amazing things. And I think we have the ability to do that in Mawa, and that maybe you should visit some other districts that do do that and see, you know, how to really improve and maybe let the librarian do some librarian things, too, in addition to...
I understand what you're saying. The Norwood superintendent is a colleague of mine. I will be more than happy to reach out. We have visited a lot of buildings, and that's one of the reasons that we came up with this, but Norwood was not one of them. So, I'll be more than happy to reach out to a colleague to see whether or not that's something that could benefit us, that benefits kids. It's worth looking into.
And you can also always join the American... The New Jersey Association of School Librarians. We're having our conference the beginning of December. It's free for administrators. Come and see what the amazing librarians in New Jersey are doing that are incorporating reading, the love of reading, improving fluency, you know, in student interest along with technology.
I will...
This should not just be a one-sided.
Absolutely, and I will absolutely consider doing that, but I can not necessarily go to a conference. I can go to any one of our elementary schools. I can walk into any library media specialist's teaching area and see exactly what it is that you're talking about. So, I can see it far and wide, but I can also see it here at Mawa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Former JK librarian. I appreciate the comments about technology. When I came to Mawa, I actually came with a very strong technology background, so I appreciate how important it is to infuse it into the curriculum. And while I was at JK, we did update the curriculum three times, the last time in August 2014, but we did try very hard to keep that emphasis on reading in spite of the increased technology standards. I'm going to skip over the part where the library were supposed to teach a love of reading and kind of cut to the chase. And I understand that you're looking to balance technology and reading, but when you look at JK every three weeks, you're down to 10 minutes of book time out of every two hours. To me, that's just not balanced as a librarian who was in the district for a long time. It's just out of kilter. But equally important, the reduction in borrowing services not only impacts the library curriculum but also the core classroom curricula because classroom teachers rely on the support of the vast resources of the library collection for their assignments. For instance, in science, they needed books for research on the elements or endangered species. In language arts, specific genres were needed in large quantities as all fourth or fifth graders were working on the same genres at the same time with nine or 10 classes. That's a lot. There's no way the classroom collections had enough fantasy when everybody was doing fantasy or historical fiction, and especially not one unit was on social issues: bullying, divorce, poverty, homelessness. Just my building up that collection was a nightmare. They need large quantities of nonfiction when they were working on specific content area, and we had hundreds of topic choices for the kids at all levels. In social studies, we specifically built up the collection in the areas of the Revolutionary or Civil War, slavery, or civil rights. So, what will happen when students get to the beginning of a new unit, but they just pass their library borrowing day? In three weeks, it'll be too late, and they'll... Classroom libraries don't have sufficient quantities to meet the student needs. And I'm wondering, since the JK media specialist teaches 23 classes, can students come during her seven open periods to exchange books? Or when the paraprofessionals... Because JK still has paras, when the paraprofessionals are in the library while she's teaching, kids were always able to come in. We had an open door. As long as there was a human being available, kids could come in and swap. And if they can't, why can't they? And I will be interested to hear how you're going to measure the negative impacts because, again, circulation is one aspect of it. It's not that measurable, the impact that it's having on kids that aren't being able to read as much as they need to. So, a classroom collection might supplement the school library, but thinking that a few hundred books where reading level was the primary selection criteria compared to a collection of thousands of books curated by a professional librarian who uses multiple selection tools and knows the community, students, and the curriculum, undervalues the qualified professionals that you have. And again, I do believe that it does a disservice to the students by limiting their access, especially every three weeks. I just think that's crazy. But thank you for your time, and thank you for the fact that you're still listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Park, Six Divine Drive. So, I'm hearing that at the end of the year, there will be a thoughtful process of evaluating this policy... Excuse me, this decision, and I hope that's true, but I'm somewhat worried. One reason that I'm worried is that we continue to hear that this decision was arrived in close consultation with teachers and librarians, and that's just not true. At the last board meeting, one of your librarians stood up and said, we were never consulted. Every teacher that I've spoken with has told me that they were not consulted in this decision. They're fearful for their jobs, so they're not going to come up here to this microphone. But we do not believe that the appropriate people were consulted in creating this decision, and the fact that this is not being acknowledged and is continually presented as these people were consulted when they were not is troubling to me.
Let me clarify if I may, Mr. Park. You are correct in one aspect. The library media specialists were absolutely part of the district technology committee in the discussion in regard to infusing the 8.1 standards. They were. The decision to use them as the point person, I think they were certainly aware of the fact that they were. What they were not aware of, and let me clarify and make this very public, they were not aware of the fact that 15 minutes or that circulation time schedule was going to change. You are accurate with that. The second piece that I'd really like to address publicly is, I've met with the library media specialists in regard to this and the change. The fearfulness that you're claiming they have of their job is not how we operate. So, if that is what it is that you're hearing, then perhaps that's something that we need to circle back on, but that was never a topic of conversation, nor is it the way that we're moving forward with this.
There's a reason why teachers are not up at this microphone, and from what we've heard from a number of teachers is they are fearful of their positions, that they will be transferred, that they will be fired, that they will be punished for speaking out. I've heard that from countless people, okay? And of course, I'm not going to mention names because we all know why, okay?
No, we don't, Mr. Park. Excuse me. We all don't know why. We don't operate in that fashion, and to stand at a microphone and to suggest that people do what it is that we do because we threaten them or they're worried about doing their jobs or not getting tenure is really a false statement and one that I'm insulted to hear.
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm reporting what I've heard from teachers.
Okay. You're safe. Thank you.
So, that's one reason. Okay. Dr. Shaw, in your speech in the beginning, you incorrectly quoted what I said at the previous board meeting. I did not say Lenape Meadows circulation was down by 1,500. I said that Joyce Kilmer circulation was down by 1,500, and Lenape Meadows was down by 500. And that's what I said. That's in the public record.
Two things in the public record, if I may, Mr. Park. I didn't refer to you specifically in regard to a parent.
I'm the one who said it.
Okay. Then, I was referring to a Pacha article, and it is listed as Lenape Meadows, and it is listed as 1,500.
Okay. Well, I know the real statistics, and the real statistics are that Joyce Kilmer was down 1,500, Lenape Meadows down 500. And again, I want to reiterate how disturbing that is, that that's only two of the schools, and that is a huge decrease in circulation already for a very short period of time for only half of the elementary schools, all right? I'm not going to guess at what the statistics are for the other schools. I invite you to release those circulation statistics if you'd like. Another thing, okay? We're hearing a lot of words, and they're the right words, and we hear people talk about how much they love reading and how important this is, and we don't want to take books out of kids' hands. But again, what's being said is not matching up with objective reality, and the reality is kids are getting fewer and fewer books into their hands. Significantly fewer amounts of books are hitting the hands of Mawa's children, okay? And so, no amount of statements to the effect of, we love, you know, reading and we don't want to, you know, reduce circulation. Those are words, and they just don't have impact. The objective reality is that our kids have fewer books in their hands because of this decision, okay? That's just the fact. Honestly, I had hoped today that we would be able to make progress, and although I'm worried, I'm looking forward to this review that's going to happen at the end of the year. I hope, as stated, that it will be an objective review completed by objective third parties who don't have a stake in the policy, and we will be watching. We will wait for the results of this review, and we will continue to press forward as we have to.
Mr. Park, I thank you very, very much for your comments.
Thank you.
However, the evaluation that will be conducted will be a discussion that I will have. It will not be a third party. It will be Mr. Fair. It'll be Dr. Dittoro, and it will be the three of us, and we will have an honest discussion with library media specialists and teachers, and that will happen, so you don't have to hope. I will tell you that it will. The report or what we find out from those conversations will be given to the public in the latter half of January. Mr. Park, I thank you very, very much for your comments.
Thank you.
However, the evaluation that will be conducted will be a discussion that I will have. It will not be a third party, it will be Mr. Fair, it'll be Dr. Dittoro, and it will be the three of us and we will have an honest discussion with library media specialists and teachers. And that will happen, so you don't have to hope, I will tell you that it will. The report or what we find out from those conversations will be given to the public in the latter half of January. The board doesn't reorganize until January third, we don't have a board meeting scheduled in place yet. So I anticipate the middle of January and I guarantee you that it will happen.
Looking forward to it.
Evelyn Slabbar, forty-three, Thunderhead Place. So I just have a couple of clarification questions. How many minutes does it take for them to check out the books at the, at the one through, the K through three level?
I don't have the exact amount, it takes longer for, for younger children to go through the circulation process. So it could be anywhere from ten minutes and on higher grades to twenty minutes. Maybe in the beginning with kindergartners and first graders, it could take twenty to twenty-five minutes. So it varies, it's not a perfect science.
Okay, and then, and maybe I misunderstood, but when you were talking about the switch at the, I, I guess my concern more is about the younger grade kids and, you know, there are screen time and access to books. But I, I believe you said that the standards used to be in the classroom and you've consolidated them with the library media specialist, did I misunderstand that?
You're, you're sort of right. The standards have been infused in the classroom throughout content areas for K to twelve and they will continue to be infused in the classroom. Our goal is to provide a more solid foundation and a more thorough, deeper foundation for our younger students so they can bring that skill set into the content areas as they get older and apply that.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of both still, it's not one or the other.
Okay, and as you know, I don't have anyone at the lower schools, so, you know, I don't, you know, the changes that have happened, I know there were big changes between the five years between my children and I'm sure that this, you know, my son's a junior now, so the changes, you know, I'm sure are drastic. But as far as what technology and what is being used in the classrooms at the K through three level right now for the younger, for the younger kids, you know, integrating these.
There's a lot of technology that's being infused. I don't have the list in front of me to accurately report to you exactly what devices are in the classroom, so I would prefer getting back to you on that if I may, to make sure that my list is accurate and I'm not speaking out of term.
Okay, and I'd like an estimate of the amount of screen time the kids have during.
It's gonna be real, real difficult for me to give you, Ms. Slabbar, because people, people, not people, our teachers choose when they're going to be putting kids on laptops or tablets or computers, depending on whatever the content of their lesson is. It would be very, very difficult for me to qualify what that is.
Okay, okay. Okay, and, okay, so it used to be at Ramapo Ridge and I believe it still is and my, my son has fond memories of Mr. Fiore in the computer class that he took there and that's the only cycle class he remembers importantly. But I know they do, they do internet research at Ramapo Ridge, which is the sixth through eighth grades, correct?
They're actually exposing kids to the internet as early as first grade, second grade, third grade, as far as what it means.
Yeah, no, I meant the cycle classes, so they have.
Perhaps, and I don't have the curriculum in front of me, Ms. Slabbar, so I don't wanna speak out of term.
Okay, and are they, are they doing robotics at that level?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, okay. And let's see, I believe something called Money Matters, which he has no recollection of unfortunately. There was a career class that used to be as exploration class, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So is there a way to perhaps look at those cycle classes and maybe reevaluate?
We're actually, we're actually doing that right now, Ms. Slabbar, we're actually doing that right now.
Okay, because, you know, my daughter, she had the home economics classes and she remembers those. We have recipes, like she has fond memories and it, it's kind of disturbing to me that my son can only recollect one class from those. So I would, I'd appreciate it if those were taken a look at and what we could integrate for the, the STEAM building and any technology at those higher levels versus the lower levels.
That's part of the reason that we're doing it, is we wanna make sure that our lower levels, K to five and six to eight, are, are ready to, to go into education.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Cruz on Alcott Road. You indicated that you have been and continue to be in consultation with yourselves and the media specialists, but there's a really big piece of the pie that I think you're missing out on and that's empirical research. I have in my hand a stack of scholarly articles from academic journals that provide a great deal of data supporting libraries as centers of literacy. You are all professionals with advanced degrees from impressive institutions and you have access to all these articles and more that steadily and repeatedly stress the importance of the school library and the development of children's literacy and the love of learning. One study that I found has the title, "I Wish Everyone Had A Library Like This", and it documents the tremendously positive benefits of creating a brand-new library space in Baltimore City schools where there was previously not one. The study details the life and literacy-changing impact on student achievement, positive school climate, and of course, reading levels that the new library had on the school community. And to think that we are privileged enough in our district to have a fully stocked library at every single elementary school and we are choosing not to use them. We are in a privileged position to offer our children these resources and we are choosing against them. I could go on and on with statistics and peer-reviewed literature that prove that removing library access is a terrible idea. But I also wanna address a significant worry that I have about this process as a whole. When we parents first heard about this policy, we began attending Board of Ed meetings to voice our concerns and disagreement through the proper channels afforded to us as the taxpayers and primary stakeholders in this town. Three meetings have passed before tonight at which multiple parents have spoken and there has been virtually no response from the board or the administration. There's no willingness to discuss this in open discussion and there has barely been an acknowledgement that many people have been speaking out with the volume that we have been speaking. But in other academic research that I have performed in preparation for my evening here, because I feel that people who decide on school policy should be very well-versed in educational research, I spent a lot of time getting to know the tenants of the ASCD, a professional organization to which I'm certain all of our district administrators belong. As members of such a high-profile educational organization, you all have pledged to support its initiatives. For some time now, the ASCD has held as its primary mission, the Whole Child Initiative. So as members of the ASCD, I feel the need to remind you of one of the tenants of the Whole Child Initiative is to have a quote, "supported child." And that means, our school personnel welcome and include all families as partners in their children's education and significant members of the school community. Our school helps families and understands available services, advocate for their children's needs and support their children's learning. Our school uses a variety of methods across languages and cultures to communicate with all families and community members about the school's vision, mission, goals, activities, and opportunities for students. And our school staff understands and makes curricular, instructional, and school improvement decisions based on child and adolescent development and student performance information. You need to do more to respond to us than just make general statements that you're thinking about it and that you're going to discuss it with uncertain, unquantifiable terms in the future. We need to know that you have thoughtfully designed a qualitative evaluation of your quote, "change of scheduling." It seems as like, as if you don't know what you're looking for as an indicator of positive change at this point in time. And I don't know what we can do to expect change if you don't know what you're looking for. Thank you.
Hi, Anne Lepore, two oh nine Highland Road. I'm a Betsy Ross parent and I wanna start on a positive note. I'm very proud of our educators at Betsy Ross. Their expertise has made a really impressive difference in my child's life in just two and a half years. I'm delighted that our principal, Dr. Bavino, is so supportive of her educators' decisions and ultimately of our students. I understand that over the course of a K through twelve literacy education, picture book selection gradually transitions to database research and paper writing. I understand that the library is an excellent central point from which to coordinate many information tools. Perhaps, the committee who made this rule intended to add more access and time to the entire library curriculum when adding more tasks, more tasks to be completed there. Dr. Worthy, thank you so much, it was really, really helpful to hear a little bit about the process through which the decision came to be made and it was also great to hear about the assessment coming up. I'm very happy that you're including our untenured librarians in the January assessment. Would you consider also including some tenured educators? I've been thinking about this in terms of those verbal math problems. If a lesson that takes thirty minutes is moved from the classroom to the library, why is the same thirty minutes of time with students not also moved? Giving librarians and students an additional thirty minutes to work together to achieve the latest prioritized tools. I'm also still a little bit confused about why this timing. We all agree that digital tech has been part of library curriculum for a very long time. Access to books has never been denied on the grounds of new tech before. I heard Dr. Shouen, your comment about other districts are also reducing library access for children. So I took it upon myself to, I called some of the schools that rank academically higher statistically in hours and none of them are restricting book checkout for young students. I'm a college professor and I can tell you that most colleges and universities have had to adjust to something called the new student. The new student scores very high on standardized tests, but has relatively low writing and reading comprehension skills. It becomes expensive for families to pay college prices for new remedial courses that we have to add to address gaps in K through twelve education in New Jersey. I've never had to send a college student for remedial software help. Remedial software help, if it existed, wouldn't be a course. It would be a five-minute YouTube tutorial. As an educator, I know that connecting tools, digital or not, to concepts and research, clear communication and comprehension is what we want for our students. It's also what we want for our communities. We want to help incentivize including all of our decision-makers to operate that way as well. As a parent of a young child with a learning disability, I know he gets one shot at founding a love of reading. If you would like to experiment with taking engagement away from students, could we move it down the line a little bit later on to a slightly older age where the stakes aren't quite so high? I'm a leader in STEM STEAM. I'll tell you that last Monday night, I was at the Best Makerspace in Bergen County. You probably visited that space as prep for your own, it's Bergen Tech Hackensack. When I was there, I mentioned our new library rule. The engineers and makers responded with very serious concern. One person, and I quoted him, said, "How can you value open access to tools, technology, information, but somehow at the expense of open access to books?" And then in my other role as a taxpayer, I can tell you that when my family was preparing to leave Jersey City, I made a spreadsheet with the top one hundred school districts in the state. Test scores, median home prices, other statistics. And we're here in Mawa because on paper, it was a really good value. We want to help you keep the value of our schools and our homes at a rating of excellent. These are our concerns. Before you commit, even after your assessment, to a new five-year plan, we want to help. We wanna be part of the process. And if we can't be part of the process, we would like tenured educators to be a part of the process. But also, you know, we're also your fundraisers, we're your HSO. Please come to us if there's an issue that you're trying to solve and it's complex, we wanna help. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to make, oh, I'm sorry, Alison, before you do, can I just thank Isla and Blake and Amanda and Tristis' mom, Catherine, I think the kids did a really great job and coming up to, to a microphone is a really big deal. Good job, guys, good job.
Good job.
Alison Calucci, twenty-eight Divine Drive. I have two quick questions. I think when we were talking about, I'm glad to hear that you're going to look at the situation again come January. You need to get through the rest of this, this year and do some talking and thinking things. And I think a lot of times when we have that discussion, we're always looking at data, 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 because that's what really drives our instruction. I really have the confidence that the educators, that are the media specialists as well as people sitting at the table, will also look at that data of children and find a way to get their voice heard. It's like they're our constituents, you know, we make all these choices for them. So when you're gathering that information, if you can find a way to also ask the kids how they're feeling about this change, because I think they're the reason we're all upset, but you're hearing our voices, you got to hear three little voices today. And there's a lot more than three voices out there, so please consider that as well. My second question comes to the STEAM. I know like budgets are prepared like two years before they even need to be done. So as you're already thinking about next year's budget with this great STEAM project happening in our high school for our high school students, are we doing anything to think about STEAM in the elementary schools? Now, I know that there have been MSF grants for Makerspace and things like that.
MSF.
And certain, and which is so wonderful that we have to support that outside the regular school budget. Are we looking to consider, maybe not next year, but maybe the year after, is there an opportunity to incorporate STEAM classes into the primary grades? Because I can only speak from the school that I'm in, it's been two years now. We actually have a STEAM teacher, which now you think, "Why are you isolating it?" But I have to say, it's great that we work collaboratively, that there's a room, there's a space where we go to, it's inviting, it has this and that, all these things that the regular classroom may not, that you're gonna start at the ground level to help build that enthusiasm and broaden students' thinking. So I don't know if that's something that's in your, back of your mind, I just.
It's actually in the forefront, it's actually in the forefront. It's in the forefront both curriculum-wise, teacher-wise, and certifications, facility-wise and looking forward, five years, ten years, and where are we going? The building coming to fruition took a couple of years to come into place, so that's, that's realistic for us. So I can't say, "Oh, this summer, we're gonna build here and build there," you know? It needs to be a thoughtful process. And what drove this building, which will drive any other facility endeavor to this extent, needs to be curriculum and needs to be instruction.
Right, and I don't even mean like build, I just mean take one of the existing classrooms you already have and staff it with something that is here that way.
And the Mawa School Foundation and the HSOs at many of our buildings have been amazing, giving funds to the administrators to start them.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's definitely on our radar because it needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Worthy, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.